St. George Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Wallace. If you would rise with me, please, for the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you this evening for this great, awesome privilege we have to be in your presence and to be in your audience. And we ask you, Lord, that you would be with the council this evening. Give them the direction, wisdom that they require, that they need. We ask you, Lord, for your protection and your safety over our community. Our first thoughts go to the first responders, our police, fire, and emergency crews, and we ask you, Lord, to watch over them. There's a lot of families in our community who are hurting because of the heroin epidemic and the fallout from that, and we ask you, Lord, for your help and your guidance there. Thank you for your goodness. Thank you for this privilege that you have given to us, that we can come and call on your name for help, and we give you praise and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Jordan and Councilman Wallace. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Smith. Councilman Wallace.
Here.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Here.
Councilwoman Mays.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse our Vice President this evening.
Thank you very much. You have a motion to excuse, and he's seconded by Councilman Wallace. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. At this time, we have approval of minutes. I would request a motion, please, for approval of our April 27, 2017 special session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mays. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on the set of minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Normally, we would be approving our regular session minutes, but those were rather extensive, and we are holding those in abeyance until our last meeting in May, the 25th, upon which time we will review and approve them. At this time, we have opportunity for a very special presentation. Mayor, please?
Thank you. I have the honor of making this very special presentation, and I'll read it first, and then we'll ask you to come up. Will anybody be taking pictures? Okay. Then we'll have you come around, and maybe we'll just shake your hand.
Can we get some pictures here?
Oh, you'll take pictures?
Okay.
Okay. So this is a resolution, and it says, whereas Mrs. Diane Elstec began her employment with the City of Xenia on March 7, 2005, as the accounts receivable manager, and whereas prior to her employment with the Xenia City of Xenia, Diana received an associate degree in accounting from Sinclair Community College and worked with local government software, including income, tax, and utility billing, for over 17 years. And whereas during her tenure with the city, Diana has dedicated to moving the city forward and has spent countless hours streamlining income tax and utility billing processes and developing new and efficient ways of doing business to improve customer service, including but not limited to the following: implementing automated meter reading, allowing the city to move to monthly meter reading; implementing online payments for utilities and tax; implementing online income tax filing; implementing changes to the city income tax rules and regulations and income tax ordinance based on House Bill 5; working with our software vendor on program changes for compliance with House Bill 5; creating utility billing rules and regulations; creating a utility billing office online peer group for over 100 members from multiple states to discuss utility issues and provide a resource for best practices in the utility billing field; implementing office technology changes, including check scanning for deposit, scanning payments to accounts, scanning records for storage and retrieval; implementing email utility billing, online customer lookup of utility accounts. Whereas among the many projects she has successfully completed during her tenure, many of these projects saved the city thousands of dollars, including the creation of online forms and postcard notification of income tax filing requirements, and outsourcing printing and mailing of utility bills. And whereas Diana has also been a valuable resource to staff and provided assistance and technical support for projects, including but not limited to the following: development of all income tax and utility billing website pages for initial website launch in 2007, as well as comprehensive website redesigns in 2011 and 15; development of technical specifications for the new financial system software requests for proposals; design of the accounts receivable office area in the new city building administration building. Whereas Diana has received several letters of commendation noting her exemplary customer service and professionalism, and in 2016, she received an award from the American Waterworks Association, Ohio, section, for career achievement demonstrating proactive practices, process improvements, and who mentors others and promotes education in the public and drinking water profession. And whereas Diana has chosen to retire from public service to work from home and spend more time with her husband Duke. And whereas Diana's last day of public service is May 12, 2017. Now therefore, the City of Xenia hereby resolves that the Xenia City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Xenia, Ohio, expresses its appreciation of the dedication and devotion she has shown to our community and to our citizens, and we wish her well in her future endeavors. We sincerely thank her for her 12 years of dedicated public service. And be it further resolved that this resolution will be placed in the permanent record of the City of Xenia, acknowledging her dedicated service to the City of Xenia. That was a Mount Vernon.
Mr. President, if I may, I know the mayor's going to get ready to do the presentation, but I'd like to take this opportunity. When we were putting together the resolution, it gave me an opportunity to look back at a lot of the things that have been done over the last 10 to 12 years. And what isn't expressed, and as the mayor said, that was a lot to put out there, but what isn't expressed in there is all the time and the effort and the personal dedication spent at great personal sacrifice, you know, for the citizens of this community. I think Brent and the rest of the staff would echo that comment. So I can't thank Diana enough for our department and on behalf of the city. Truly, I see Becky over there, and she was involved. She was former Assistant Finance Director when we brought Diana on. But I can't say that, I can say this without hesitation, that, you know, there are very few people, it's the right place, and the right time, and the right person for a particular job. And there is no truer thing that I can say than that would be the case for Diana coming to us at the time that she did, and all the advances we've been able to make for the citizens directly as a result of her effort. So we are going to miss her terribly and tremendously, but we know she'll be around.
Here, here. All right. Can we get the council fully in the background? Great. And one more.
Becky almost ought to come up and join them, didn't she?
Sir?
I just want to thank everybody. This was a great opportunity for me. Mark is the best boss anybody could have. I have a great staff, but Mark pretty much, if I said, "Can we try this?", he went, "Sure." So, and not every boss is like that. So I have really enjoyed my time here, and I will miss everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You want to come up and go around and shake your hand and thank over the surface?
God bless you, and I would best to you, and to heaven. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Diana, I wish you hadn't said that about Mark. He's up for a pay raise.
Okay. Our next portion of the meeting is time for audience comments. If anyone would care to come?
Do we actually need to pass that resolution?
Oh, we do need to pass the resolution. I'm terribly sorry.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion then seconded by Councilwoman Mills and the mayor. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please feel free to do so. Step to the podium, provide your name and address. Limit your comments to three to four minutes, please.
Thank you very much. John Kopp, 936 Orville Way. I'd like to also congratulate Diana on her time with the city. As Mark alluded to, a fine employee. I'd be remiss, though, about a month ago, when I was up here, I totally neglected to congratulate Bill Buckwater on his 42 years of service to the City of Xenia. It's a long, long time, and I didn't see anything on Facebook or anything on the city's website, so I want to personally congratulate Bill and wish him the best in his retirement. Tonight, I'd like to speak to you as a board member for the Board of Elections. When Denise Percival became Deputy Director at the Board of Elections a few years back when I was still on council, I know she approached our city clerk about changing the city's petition to run for city council. The City of Xenia and the City of Yellow Springs, or the Village of Yellow Springs, are the only two municipalities in Green County that do not use the standard Secretary of State petition that can be pulled off the website. So, you know, it would be nice if everyone in Green County was uniform and everybody used the same petition. It does not state that, or mean that you have to change the number of signatures that you require or anything like that. It just standardizes the petition that everyone is using in Green County. So with that being said, I would hope that possibly council would take and address that with the city clerk and see if we can make that change before this upcoming election season. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I know we don't normally address audience comments, but since Mr. Kopp is on the vote of elections, by when would we need to make any change in order to make heaven affect it for the?
We can certainly have the city clerk call and investigate that.
Yeah, we've looked at that issue before. We've had contact with Mrs. Percival on that issue. I don't remember where we left it, but certainly we can, we can take that back up again, bring it back to council.
Check, research that, and bring it back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to come and address the City Council this evening, please?
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, Xenia City Council. I'm Thomas Scrivens, and by the grace of God, I still reside at 725 Lexington Avenue here in Xenia. I want to give the council kudos and thanks for taking out the yellow pant and going to work. Makes the place look a lot better, especially where you're not supposed to park. We have a problem, some neighborhoods where we have semis parking in the neighborhood, and even on yellow. And unfortunately, our finest ride right by them. So maybe a word to the wise will be sufficient on that note. Other than that, I'd like to congratulate Bridges of Hope for obtaining the Simon Kenton Building. We look forward to great things, and I see some of the people downtown here, I'm sure they will be very happy about that. So just wanted to say thank you. I hate to see Mr. Morrison hang up his spurs, but apparently being a two-time loser at the ballot box makes you cower and run. But Xenia needs to continue to step up, and behind your good leadership, Mr. President, and Madam Mayor, and the city manager, I'm sure we're going to make that mark. We need to continue to press for the mark. And, you know, we can see progress. I just wanted to say, the last rain event, quite a lot of grass rolled down to the storm drain. There was a couple of them in my neighborhood. I, whoosh! You know? We need to get our crews out there, especially after a rain event. Make sure those storm drains are clean so we can handle the water. There's still standing water, and God knows what happens when you have standing water. So there are a number of standing water places, a couple of them I've made the council aware of time and time again. One's on Orchard Street there, between East Church and Radar. The stone washes down and then blocks the path, and water backs up. So with that, Mr. President, we just wanted to say we're happy to see the council getting behind the city workers and making them pull out the paintbrush, in this case, it's a machine, and at least the downtown square looks presentable. And we want to continue that as we move toward our entryways, and then eventually I'd like to see our entries, each one of them, beautified and signage, you know, "Welcome to Xenia." Thank you, sir. Appreciate the time, and God bless everybody.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
Hello, my name's Dan Jordan, and I live at 91 Taca Drive here in Xenia. On behalf of Bridges of Hope, when the vote came through from the council that we were able to receive Simon Kenton Building, I was not able to say thank you, and that's my purpose this evening. And I do appreciate the response and the favorable vote. I appreciate so much the help from the city staff, Brent, Ryan, Chris, those who have been a part of this. And a lot has happened in the last two weeks. We have two major partners that we are working with as far as coming in to work with us in the building. A lot of interest, a lot of energy, good momentum, and so just thank you. We've got a ways to go, but I appreciate your support, and we are here to help our community be the best it can be. And so, again, just wanted to say thank you for your, your support and your help. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Jarvis, 715 Mount Vernon Drive. I just have one comment to make. I know you can't answer questions if I present a question to you, but at the next council meeting, I would like to know how much money the City of Xenia spent on having a police officer out here in front doors out here at the last meeting? Thank you.
Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
Seeing none, we'll move to reports of committees. Vice President Smith is absent this evening, so we will reschedule his report on planning and zoning commission. Councilwoman Mills, Board for Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities, please.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we had discussed all of our plans that we were making for First Fridays. Unfortunately, due to the weather, which I believe was a very wise decision, it was canceled, so we did not have the opportunity to pass out the seedlings and have the activities for children to participate with the Arbor Day events. We had two very successful Arbor Days, one planning at an elementary school here in Xenia, and the other one, two trees planning at Shawnee Park, and it was a very successful event. We spoke about the Easter egg hunt and how great it was, and then we also look forward to the fishing derby, which is June 3, and it will begin at 9 o'clock, so we hope everyone will be able to come out and participate in that. And that was what we had focused on in our last meeting.
Thank you very much. Anything for Councilwoman Mills and Board for Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities, please?
The only question is, do we know when the first First Friday will be rescheduled?
I am not in, this bracket board is not part of First Fridays. It's done independently, not through the city, so I am not sure.
City manager, do you have any update?
We've not had any communication back yet of whether they'll tack another event on or not. We'll certainly find out for you.
But June 2 is the First Friday of June, and then the fishing derby is June 3, so I'm hoping that we have a full weekend here in the City of Xenia.
I believe the reason, the weather forced most of the vendors to cancel, and so they had virtually no vendors who were going to show up, which is why they ended up canceling for the May event.
Anything else for bracket, please? Seeing none, Councilwoman Mays, Traffic Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Traffic did not meet on May 1. We had previously met in April, and due to a scheduling conflict, we had to switch our meeting to April 11. At that time, we asked our city engineer in that department to do some research on Whitman Drive and some possible options to, to address the situation there. Because there was not a full month in between to do that research, we have not met in May, so we are planning to come back to that in June, June 5, and hopefully then present the council with some options. And I would like to remind those who are watching at home or out in the audience that we do still have an opening on Traffic Commission, and we would definitely appreciate anybody who is willing to step up and fill that vacancy. You can contact the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for Councilwoman Mays in Traffic, please?
Seeing none, Mayor Bayless, Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on April 24. We had two items that were almost identical. One, the first was a variance request to allow six-foot-tall wood privacy fence to be constructed in the front yard on a corner lot at 2326 Minnesota Drive by property owner Shawn Davidson, and that was denied. The second was a variance request to allow six-foot-tall wood privacy fence to be constructed in the front yard on a corner lot at 590 Colorado Drive filed by property owner Robert Bynum Jr., and that was denied as well.
Thank you. Anything for Mayor Bayless and Board of Zoning Appeals, please?
And we do have an opening on our board as well.
Thank you very much. So any of the openings that you've heard, please contact the city clerk to submit a letter of interest, please. Next item on the agenda is items from city council and mayor. Anything from my colleagues to bring to the order? There's nothing scheduled this evening. Councilman?
Mr. City Manager, maybe you can address this. There's a little bit of misunderstanding. We voted three to two to go into negotiations with Bridges of Hope. You have to come back with an ordinance, and it takes four votes to pass that. So my point is, it's not a done deal with Bridges of Hope.
Pursuant to our regulatory requirements, yeah, for a transfer of the real estate, the real property, it will require an ordinance to approve the purchase agreement, and that would, that ordinance would necess, excuse me, necessitate a four-vote majority.
Thank you.
And I think we've tentatively scheduled that for, or projected that for the next meeting, I believe.
Thank you. Anything else, please? Seeing none, reports to city offices, Mr. City Manager, or, excuse me, Xenia Municipal Court, not used to that out of order. Go ahead. Thank you.
President Engel, Mayor Bayless, city councilmen and councilwomen and other respected members of this panel, thank you for their time. Some of you may remember about nine years ago, when Judge Murray was elected to be judge of Xenia Municipal Court, and I, as an appointed clerk, became quite aware of the pretty critical need of our file records that were in the just horrendous shape. Came to the council, there was an emergency ordinance passed to provide some monies to begin getting some damaged files in better shape, getting them off the floor, getting them, and we had, there were files out in a storage center out on North Detroit Street that had to be retrieved, and so, to make a long story short, we began then some emergency measures to try to protect the integrity, which is my, one of my jobs as a clerk, to maintain. We began a scanning, a system to digitize all records from that point forward. So somewhere around 2009 and forward, we have then digitized all of our court records, so they are, they are saved electronically, as well as we have hard copies of as well, but we don't have digitized copies of the pre-2009 files. As we were planning to our move to the probation department, over to the Justice Center and the Archive Center, then over to the City Service Center, just began thinking and strategizing on moving a lot of these pre-2009 records that are right now, they're protected, they're safe, they're dry, but they're in metal storage cabinets in the basements of both of those facilities, and just the physical work and labor of moving those files to another location was, kept me up at night, a few nights, just trying to think of how we can do this. And so, not wanting to be in the top person, and I hate to move things twice or do more work than what we have to, began to think of some, well, what could we do? Could we begin backscanning these files? I began thinking in terms of maybe hiring some part-time people. I even talked to Ryan Duke about the possibility. I began to think of the number of hours it would take to backscan, close to a million pieces of paper, and that was, that was cost prohibitive. I began to check with some vendors to see about hiring, the digitizing of those records out, and I received sticker shock on both of those items. And so, around the first of the year, I was made aware through email that the Ohio Court Technology Grant was going to be made available for courts who would make applications to that grant. We'd received a smaller grant two years ago, and so I prepared a petition for two grants for the court. One would be for some recording equipment in, in the area, which will be our, the old council chambers, which would be our second courtroom. But then the other, I thought, I'm going to put this petition out, so I made a bid for a $67,450 grant then for a digitizing of all of our court records. And on April of this year, I received the word that we had, we had been granted that particular grant. We, Xenia Municipal Court, was, and the amount we received was the third highest grant awarded in the state of Ohio for municipal court. And so that check has already been received, it has been deposited, and so my request for you today is to, as you can see on the back page, to waive the reading of an ordinance at two consecutive meetings and pass as an emergency an ordinance to appropriate $67,450, which again has already been received and deposited in line 101, 1002, 53290, and authorize myself, the clerk, to execute a purchase order in the amount of $67,424.63 to Ryco Woodhall to allow XMC to complete the document imaging backscanning project.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency, to appropriate the requested amount of monies and to authorize the clerk of court to execute the purchase order?
I so move, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Wallace, second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Discussion or question on the motion, please?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That would be my only comment.
Absolutely.
That's incredible.
Good job.
Thank you for going out and seeking these grants and being able to get it. That's fantastic.
Trust me, no one was happier to receive that letter than I was. It was going to be... meetings and pass as an emergency, an ordinance to appropriate $67,450, which again, has already been received and deposited, in line 101, 1002, 53290, and authorize myself, the clerk, to execute a purchase order in the amount of $67,424.63 to Ryco Woodhall to allow XMC to complete the document imaging backscanning project.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency, to appropriate the requested amount of monies and to authorize the clerk of court to execute the purchase order?
I so moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Wallace, second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Discussion or question on the motion, please?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That would be my only comment.
Absolutely.
That's incredible.
Good job.
Thank you for going out and seeking these grants and being able to get it. That's fantastic.
Trust me, no one was happier to receive that letter than I was. It was going to be a lot of my physical labor as well.
I did have one question. Now, will we actually destroy the paper records?
Yes.
Once they're digits?
That is in compliance with not only our local rules, but also the Supreme Court rules. As long as we have a digitized copy that's accessible, and we do, we will, of those records, then they, yeah, this, this amount will, what we will do is we will physically prepare, move the files, and we, we do have to like remove staples and things like that, get them paper-ready, we'll box them up. They come with their trucks, we will load them, help load them in the trucks, they take them away, they will scan them, and then they will, they will purge them, they will shred them. And that's all in apply. This is a company that also does a number of government agencies. They are approved by government to do that. We received the recommendation by two other municipal courts that have used their services, so they are, they are trustworthy agency to do that work.
And then we'll sell some file cabinets down the road.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, we will.
On that same note, obviously cybersecurity is of tremendous concern. I'm assuming that this particular enterprise is having it backup stored for you somewhere and protected as well?
Yes. A part of the, and this would be an IT question, but a part of our objective and goal here at IT is also to have our, all of our backups, not only here, but also in a, in a, in a place. I believe they're going to be out in the service center.
Three locations actually will be able to backup, don't it?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any other questions, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, do we need another motion to go as an emergency, or did we include?
It was all inclusive. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only scheduled item this evening is a recommendation that City Council authorize execution of a contract with Public Entity's Pool of Ohio for property and liability insurance coverage from May 1, 2017 to May 1, 2018, in an amount of $205,461, with Montgomery Insurance continuing to serve as the broker of record and our local customer service agent. Staff feels that continuing our arrangement with PEP provides a cost-effective approach to this important service provision. Staff continues to work with Montgomery Insurance and PEP representatives to refine our coverage and ensure a good service delivery for our organization. We recommend a motion to approve the contract to engage the service as described for another coverage here.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with PEP?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mays, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
The only other item I have this evening is just a brief update. We're on the precipice of handvention, so I wanted to bring council up to speed on that event. Staff has, of course, continued to work with leadership from Green County, Xenia Township and the convention planners for the, what is really now imminent 2017 Dayton Handvention, which is being hosted at the Green County Fairgrounds. The event will occur May 19th, 20th, and 21st. The city will play a critical role in the event administration, supporting public safety and traffic control needs, in addition to marketing and various other community outreach efforts that we're participating in. Residents will see the first signs of handvention within the next couple of workdays, as banners and signage will begin to appear around the city. City staff working with Xenia Township leaders has also sent out information letters to local residents in immediate vicinity around the convention site. This will specifically provide information to those most directly impacted by the event so that they can be prepared. Today, we plan to issue the first of two community-wide hyperreached calls with event details and information on potential impacts to our public, given the infusion of conventioneers, which are expected to arrive next weekend. As a reminder, the event organizers do estimate daily attendance at the event of 30,000 or more attendees, which effectively doubles our local population, so we want to make sure that our, our citizens are aware and prepared. Additionally, we'll send a second community-wide hyperreached call as a final reminder with any updates next Thursday evening, the night before the convention opens. City staff's working with Convention and Visitors Bureau with our local businesses as well. We've provided communications to local businesses. We did have an event earlier this week that we provided for an opportunity to ask any questions for, you know, by local businesses of the, for the convention planners. So, we've done our best to do some business outreach and make sure that they're prepared for the, the folks who are coming into town. So, we're excited about the event, looking forward to getting it over with a little bit, just so that we can, you know, kind of get that off of our back. It's, it's been a long time in the planning. We're a little nervous about how the administration will go. The only other probably key to look at is weather. The preliminary forecast does show the potential for rain next Thursday, Friday, so I think things will be a little more complex if we do get that rain, but of course, that's, you know, a week out, so we'll see what we get.
Thank you.
Anything we can do about it?
Anything for the city manager, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items this evening, first of which, I'm asking for introduction of a resolution authorizing the certification assessments to the county auditor for unpaid weed mowing, trash cleanup, and utility invoices. This is the first one for the year. We do this now three times a year.
Thank you very much. May I have an introduction, please, from one of my colleagues? Introduced by Councilman Lauterback. Thank you.
And the second item I have is the scheduled bills in the amount of $751,456.46.
Thank you. Motion to pay our bills, please.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on our bills, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
All I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything for our finance director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director?
There are three, four ordinances for action tonight, and I'll begin with the first one. Ordinance approving a major change to a PUD concept plan for an existing 158.382-acre planned unit development encompassing parcels or portions of parcels formerly known as the Ohio Veterans Children's Home, OVCH. By increasing the PUD to a total of 249.837 acres and modifying the PUD standards, this ordinance was originally introduced by Mayor Bayless.
Mr. President, I'll move that for passage.
Thank you. Have a motion to pass. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wallace. Discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Ordinance amending Part 10 Streets Utilities and Public Services Code Title VI, Other Public Service, Chapter 1060, Sanitation Service of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Xenia. And this ordinance was originally introduced by Councilman Lauterback.
So moved, Mr. President.
Move for passage, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Ordinance amending Part II Administration Code Title 12 Fees, Chapter 298 Fee Schedule of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Xenia. This ordinance was originally introduced by Councilwoman Mills.
So moved, as written.
Thank you. Move for passage, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Ordinance amending Part II Administrative Code Title VI Administration, Chapter 260, Employees Generally, Section 260.03 Pay Sources of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Xenia to amend pay sources for laborer, originally introduced by Vice President Smith.
I will make the motion to pass for the Vice President, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Councilman Wallace. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
No.
Councilwoman Mills.
No.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything for our law director this evening, please? Seeing none, we'll move to reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Lauterback, please.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mays.
I have nothing this evening.
Councilman Wallace.
I have nothing this evening.
Councilwoman Mills.
Well, I have something this evening.
Thank you.
I just want to say that school is getting near the end, and before our next council meeting, I believe, school will be out. And also, before our next council meeting, the 2017 graduates of Xenia High School will have their commencement. So, I want to congratulate everyone having their commencement on May 24th at the Nutter Center, and I'm very happy and very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. And you have a graduate, correct?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. I do want to congratulate our own Captain Steve Lane. He graduated from Wilberforce University in the Klein Program, and so I was able to attend the baccalaureate service at Wilberforce University and the graduation of Central State University. I attended also the Change of Command Ceremony. It was held at the Air Force Museum. This was the first time they've ever had two Change of Command Ceremonies at one time. So, that was very interesting, and it went very quickly. I also attended the Green Memorial Hospital Prayer Breakfast, and it was really delightful to not only see once again, but hear from the former President Terry Burns. He was the speaker on that occasion. And then on Friday, had several events on Friday. I did have seven, but the rain stopped the, the activity, so. But the Green County Legislative Breakfast was held that morning at the Career Center, and area politicians gave updates on the county and state levels. And then I attended the Cycling and Tracks Workshop that was held at Wright State University, and there were several in attendance. And that was the same time as Wilberforce University's baccalaureate service. And then that evening, I attended the Denim and Diamonds fundraiser for the Green County Domestic Violence Center, and followed by Saturday morning being a special guest at Central State's graduation. And then on Sunday, I greeted a group of bikers. This was in between church. So, I greeted some bikers. They traveled from the International Trail, for the International Trail Symposium, and it was really interesting. There was a pretty large group, and I just asked them if they could just tell us briefly just where they're from, and they were from all over the country, from the Midwest to California, that area. But real interesting, and they thought we had a wonderful city and were delighted that I would come out and meet and greet them, so. Other members of the International Trail met at the Bike Hub on Tuesday, so I met them as well. They were doing a slow road tour, and they were learning about the historical sites in Xenia, and then traveling by bike to Wilberforce of those historical areas as well. And then also on Tuesday, Arrow wood celebrated its Arbor Day, and they had the planting of trees, and it was witnessed by several classes. And of course, the number one request was that I bring Bruno along, so he attended as well. And just as he did last year, he left a treat on, in the grass, which, as he did last year. Right, the trees, just bring it out, I guess. And then I attended Xenia's teachers' retirement dinner, and I was certainly honored when I was asked to speak for Lori Anger, and she's the wife of our own retired, newly-retired detective Scott Anger, and it was a great celebration, and I was able to, because I was principal in the building where she taught, she asked that I just speak for her, so I was able to introduce her, and that was quite an honor. And then I just want to congratulate all the retirees and, plus the newest retirement that we learned of, well, some learned yesterday or before, and some learned today about Superintendent Denny Morrison. He has given so much to this, not only to the school district, but to this community, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of items as well. The mayor and I also attended the school board meeting that was held earlier this, this week, where we were able to hear about the Kids of Character from Xenia Community Schools, a great lineup of one from each of the schools, including the middle school and high school. We also got to meet the graduates of distinction from this year's graduating class, that, all of them going on to certainly a diverse range of higher education opportunities and a wide range of schools, mostly in the local area, but a few outside the area. We also heard from the board and heard from, I believe it was 13 people, speaking in favor of putting the levy proposal back up again on the ballot in August. The comments received by the board were overwhelmingly positive, and I would encourage everyone on either side of the equation, as I did that evening, to seek out the facts, for all to only provide documentable facts and not merely opinions or, or slant, and that all of us would hopefully respect one another's point of view and move forward with character, hospitality, and integrity as we go through this process that I'm sure will be interesting and challenging as the vote from the last election proved that there is division within the city over the, the need for this issue. I would also congratulate the Xenia graduates coming up very shortly. I had one last year. It is a great time and a time of great change, so good luck to all of them, and also congratulations, obviously, to our college graduates from Central State and Wilberforce. And a sincere, a very, very sincere, as the mayor said, thanks to Denny Morrison. He has been a phenomenal superintendent for the community schools, one which will not be easily replaced, but we just wish him well in retirement and all the blessings and enjoyment that come with retirement.
Mr. President, I did have one thing, and the mayor reminded me of it, actually, and it's the first time, I think, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, because you know a lot more about Xenia history than I do, but the Xenia High School Marching Band
Oh, yeah.
performed at the Wilberforce Commencement on Saturday, and they were absolutely marvelous. They, they did a superb job bringing the faculty and the, and the platform, biggest guests, into and out of the commencement, and they seemed to enjoy the commencement. So, I was there for Captain Lane's graduation, as well as all of the graduates. I had 118 graduates at Wilberforce on Saturday. I was one of the marshals, as a matter of fact, so it was a wonderful experience for me and for them, and they did just a superb job. They represented Xenia High School extremely, extremely well, and I congratulate them for their participation in the Wilberforce graduation, and it was President Felton's first graduation as the 21st president of Wilberforce University, so.
Thank you very much. I have one additional item I would like to bring forward for councils' consideration. I would like to move that we adjourn to a very brief executive session to discuss personnel matters. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wallace. Discussion or question on the motion, please? And we will not be coming back out of executive session to do any substantive business. The audience is welcome to stay if they like, but I assure you, we are not coming back to do any substantive business. We will essentially conclude from there and then formally conclude as required out here as, as necessary. Roll call, please?
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.